My bad. Okay.
Call your husband back.
We need beer. We need some more drinkies. Okay. Call this meeting of the Southwest Looking Board of Education to order. It is 7:00 PM on Thursday, September the 19th. We'd like to recognize both our, all of our visitors online and here. If you would like to stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
We are recording, ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zani.
Here.
And Mrs. Engel.
Here. We have a quorum, we can continue. Public participation, anything wrong? Okay. And adoption of the agenda. We have agenda with... Motion to adopt the agenda is presented, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes. I think that passes. Lots of presentations tonight, so let's start with Garmenta Miller, please.
Thank you. On the new buildings, the new high school and new 4-5 elementary, our role right now, we're answering questions from the contractors, reviewing shop drawings. I think Robertson and our team are working well together on getting those expedited to keep things moving. On the Etna Elementary renovation, still working through getting on budget and working through estimates in that regard. We believe we'll have that resolved during the next couple of weeks. It's important to note that our team is continuing with design so things aren't slowed down. Still tracking that design development submission in December. So hopefully have a report for you soon on the budget and where that stands. On the Watkins High School renovation to middle school, we presented a floor plan to the district, got some feedback, and have been tweaking that. Also, we've been doing a lot of build verification. It's a large building, so we want to make sure we understand all the systems that are in there. We are going to be doing things like next week, the sanitary lines are going to get checked to, just to see where routes are. We're actually scanning that whole building with a laser system, so we have it all three-dimensional. And then we take that back and we input it into our Revit 3D model, which you've seen some of that as we develop the new buildings. There will be a team in there on Monday doing the final scanning of the building, so you may see them in there with the equipment. Our staff did meet with a lot of the district staff today, just getting feedback from them on what their needs are and going through that so we can continue to tweak. And we will meet again with the district here soon just to kind of review the feedback we got, see how we want to modify the floor plan moving forward. What you're seeing here is, I guess, is the floor plan as it stands, and I just emphasize, like I said, we will, this will continue to tweak a little bit, but I'll have Kirk South just give you a little summary on some of the major changes from the way the building is built this right now.
Good evening, thank you. So just to give you some, some orientation about what's been talked about before, north is towards the floor, the way this is shown. Main entrance is here with the office area, restrooms, and the main hallway that runs this way with the cafeteria, auditorium, and gym on this side. And the rest of this side is classrooms. So one of the, one of the design concepts or one of the challenges we're trying to solve is all of the student circulation in this main hallway. So what we're proposing right now is to cut a corridor through some of these classrooms and then also this one so that students can intermingle in here without going out into the, out into the main hallway. So still working through all the details and that type of thing on that. But, and as Eric mentioned, we'll have an update for you again next month, but wanted to show you where we were today.
That's really it for our part, do you have any questions?
Any other questions?
Is that within our budget to do that? Because I don't remember ever discussing other hallways, is that...
Yeah, that's something that we have been talking about for a while, so, and always with the budget, we have to work within the budget we have. But yes, that's something that we're, that we're trying to, trying to accomplish.
That's exciting.
It's important to note then, with, with Watkins, we are in what is the schematic design level, so it's a little behind Etna. So at the end of October is the scheduled submission of schematic design, and that's when we'll price all this, and Robertson will price it, and we'll reconcile it at that time. But we believe we can get this in budget.
Good.
Anything else?
There are, there are, I can't remember if this has been asked, there are restrooms on the outside of that? Are those being left or are those being eliminated?
The restrooms you're talking to the north, for the, by the athletic field?
Yeah.
Those are remaining, correct? I don't know for sure, but that's something we'll find out.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's my recollection, is those were standing there.
Okay.
They're, they're shown there.
Okay.
From a distance, like...
Yeah, that, my vision doesn't let me know what anything is over there, so...
Are the rooms with the, I don't know, is it four-by-four black grids?
Those blocks.
Are those the present classrooms and the ones on the outside are new ones?
This is the existing high school, right?
This is the existing high school, right?
Okay.
So those are science rooms proposed on the top.
Okay.
And then the ones with the black boxes are just a representation of student desks in there, in the typical classroom.
So, so basically no outer walls? Everything renovated within the...
Within the existing wall.
Existing outside, footprint, okay.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Robertson, construction?
Well, this should be pretty quick now. Maybe today we'll read some perspective to the areas that we're looking at and talking about. As we go through... I'm lost already.
Good job, nice presentation. I'm saying make it fast, that's what...
Any questions?
Yes. I'm stealing all the thunder there. So as we walk today, looking at the high school and the elementary school, now when we talk about areas A, B, and C in the elementary, which is much simpler. C was the area that we had the concrete in, or the slaps down. B, your gym and student dining, you saw the gym area. And then A is where we're doing the underground plumbing. And at the high school, we came in the back of the, the back of the high school towards the orchestra pit, then the area A. And then the student dining and gymnasium, both in areas B and C is where the focus of our work has been. So this month, at the elementary school, we've been able to get a lot of the underground electric, the underground plumbing in areas B and C. As you saw, we got some concrete slabs down. The masonry in the gym wall is nearing top-out phase. Beginning of October, I believe October 2nd, is our first steel dates. So we'll be starting to set steel in the gymnasium, hopefully in the first floor of area C and in the tower. So that'll be another big milestone that we can hit. We've got the elevator pit in. And current issues that we're working through still at the elementary, there was a seven-day weather from the early site that we're still working through to get that incorporated into our schedule. And we're also working through some self-perform packages with the state that Robertson is doing. And as a team, I think we're all still trying to work through some timing and response issues and make sure that all the information flows correctly. At the high school, this makes it really hard when you walk through the building to talk about it. Any questions at the high school? Currently, the gym is going up, footers are going into the ground, orchestra pit is a highly intensive labor area that we've been working in for about a month. They're going to be working through the top-out of the masonry and the gym and then moving over to the auditorium and starting those double walls going all the way up. To give some, you now see the perspective, I guess, of the height of the gym in relation to Route 40. So the presence of this school is going to be very prominent as you drive down Route 40. At the high school, current issues, again, the weather, and we are trying to work through and get our baseline schedule completed and signed off for the contractors so that we have something to go by from here on out. At the elementary, we've had it signed off, we did some revisions, we're going through a second sign-off, but we've got that one well again. In regards to budgets and owner contingencies, at the elementary school, you can see from the pie chart, there's a very small part of that that has been used. And most of the changes that have happened in the elementary are a proportion of site work changes. And the same thing for the high school. I think 100% of the high school are site work changes that are being distributed at a percentage basis. So we're still in very good shape for both of those. In regards to CMR contingency for the site, between approved and pending change orders, we've used about a quarter of our site work budget, or our site work contingency. If we can salvage that when we get done with the site work, that then goes back to the owner, so we're working to protect that. One of the big events that is happening for the site work is there was an allowance in the site work for almost $200,000 that we're returning back to the owner. That we are, we're not using it in the site work package. It was actually for the portions of the connector road that were bid with the elementary, so that money's going to be returned to the district. At the 4-5, we have not used any contingency to date on either one of the buildings. As far as schedule and looking ahead for the next two weeks, on the site improvement package, we have pretty much completed all the utilities that we need to complete to allow all the other trades to work on both buildings. There are some miscellaneous tie-ins or pieces of parts around the building that we couldn't get to. We are starting the connector road and there, we've got the connector road graded to where the box culvert goes in. They're currently working on that culvert to go over the stream portion. Once they get that in, they can continue with the connector road towards Watkins. Water lines, meter pits, again, a lot of final connections that are needed there. We're meeting next week with the asphalt contractor. Our goal is to get as much asphalt down this year as we can. We'll definitely be able to get some of the parking lots. We hope to get some of the roadway, but that'll be secondary. But the more we do now, the much cleaner and easier it is for everybody at the site. I had presented the last couple of months on where we're at with the site utilities. We are, in essence, like I said, complete for what we need to get done for the contractors to work. There's still the deep tie-in over Route 40 and some connections outside the building paths, but nothing that is holding anything up. And the same thing for grading and stonework. We have got both building paths completed, they're graded, they're stoned. All parking lots are stoned. We have the access from Route 40 almost to the high school stoned in. And they're going to try to complete that all the way back past the elementary as we get the stone in, in the next couple of weeks. For the elementary school, looking ahead, we are going to be bringing, finishing the gym. In area C, where the two-story section is of area C, we're going to be bringing the masonry up there to the point that the steel sets to hold the floor. And by next meeting, we should have all the steel set for the floor on the second floor of area C and be getting ready and thinking about slab-on-deck floor. Within the next month, we should have most of the first-floor slabs poured. So once they move around C, then they will come back to area A and continue masonry there. Underground electric, plumbing, both going very well. Our air inling units, the big units, are coming in mid-October. And that's part of the goal, to get area C up, is we've got a mezzanine there that one of the units sits on, and we've got a mezzanine over by the gym that another unit goes into. So we want to be able to get those units as they come in and set them in place before we put the steel and enclose it. Footers at the elementary, thanks to Bob, I've got a great picture. I was showing you the areas that we had done. Obviously, we've got all of those in now. And as you look down on this, I believe this was from September 7th, you can see all footers plus the gym walls coming up. At the high school, they're continuing with coordination. They're continuing with footers and foundation block to be able to get that up to slab level. The orchestra pit, within the next month, or actually with, probably next week, they'll be pouring the walls in the orchestra pit and stripping those and getting those ready. And working, by, by next meeting, the auditorium will be going up. So that'll be exciting. On the site improvement package, items that we're going through right now, we do have excess soil on-site. We've come up with a plan, we're getting pricing for it right now, to take that excess soil and use it on the connector road where there was a valley in the connector road. We're now going to try to bring that up. It's going to be more of a level road all the way across. So that'll be a good place to lose some of that excess soils. Submittals for site improvements, we had 81, 58 are submitted. The rest are really close-out submittals that will be coming once they complete. RFIs are up to date. At the 4-5, out of 972 submittals, we have 289 submitted, 24 pending, and we have 400 more to go. So that is actually good. Of that 400, there's probably 150 or so that would be close-out related. So we're getting close on there. And then RFIs, we've had 58 of those to date and currently have eight, or three of them open. At the high school, we've had almost 1200 submittals. We've only got 180 submitted to date with 46 of them submitted and still pending, and 600 more to go. Quality control and safety. Pre-installation meetings that are coming up is the communication metal support tower, some foam dimple installation. And then we're actually bringing in the roofer to start his pre-installation meetings, make sure that he's got everything ordered, everything's in line, he knows what's expected. As we've actually got to start thinking about the roof, which is a great thing to think about. Safety, we've had no incidents. I actually had our safety person out there today to make sure everything was ready. When you came out, there were a couple guys that were not wearing safety glasses and one ladder that we found that was not code-required or code-compliant, but those were all taken care of on-site. Skipping, the same thing at the high school in regards to safety. Skipping to some of the pictures, I'm going to go through these pretty quick. There's just a few I want to point out. The one in the upper left is at the detention basin, and that's actually the storm to slow down the water as it leaves the detention basin. And the one on the upper right is a guy working in that excavation that I was talking about, that's 26 feet deep. So that's a photo looking down on him. The picture on the upper left was taken September 17th. That is the elementary gym. And if you look at the top where all the boxouts are, that's where the sound block went in and the basery that went up above that. Again, in the upper left is the orchestra pit from September 4th, so that's about two weeks ago. And you can see there's about eight or nine guys in there working. And then bottom left is the gymnasium at the high school from September 17th. So you can see they went up almost 15 to 20 feet in a couple days. And then the bottom right is the orchestra pit, two weeks later. Again, the top picture is the backside of the elementary school in full view. And bottom right is the high school from the front side of it, looking at the classroom section over to the gymnasium. And the top picture here is a picture that we'll present every month so you have a comparison, in essence, looking at the front doors of both schools. Any questions?
Thank you. Julie?
You've done such a good job, I don't usually have to say much about this one on the offsite. Because you could see it tonight. Just a few things to remember, the offsite road improvement, that construction is supposed to start spring of 2021. Etna Elementary School's schematic design was over budget, continues working through some cost savings and some scope reduction and trying to find some creative ways to get that back in budget. So we will not be approving that base submission tonight. Watkins High School renovation was a design meeting held in August, and I guess there was one, was one that, you said that? So the design meetings are going on. There'll be additional meetings through October, and that schematic submission is due 10/31. We did it yesterday, and talk a little bit about the interim between the time that the elementary school opens and everything else is open on 40, how we're going to move to Watkins High School. Work is ongoing on the site package. Basically, we're hitting all of our dates here. It looks great out there, it's really moving. The weather's been good so far. So basically, our upcoming task for tonight is we need to approve an LFI MOU for post, 4-5 building, post-GMP bid, I forget the right word, post-GMP bid. The amount didn't change because we have a guaranteed maximum price. But on the inside, because some of the cost changed, we had to reduce some of the money more on that side of that. We will, if we approve that tonight, it'll go through. And then as we start looking at any cost savings and CM contingency, some of that may come back into the project. And that's the one that we've got to be careful with, so... I always like to talk about risk, actually, I don't like to talk about risk, but I feel responsible, a responsibility to do that. We still have potential schedule impacts. Weather's been pretty good to us right now, but we are getting phone, sometimes it can be bad. We still have estimate budget reconciliation for two more schools coming up. We have those allowances for a later package, that weather. And the additional soil on-site, that's a risk. We don't know what that's going to cost yet. They're working on it, so as soon as we're able to show that with the district. And I did include the financial status, and recently I have been nicely reconciled. And is there any questions tonight?
All right. Now, Garmenta Miller, again.
I'm going to go ahead and take the lead on that.
Oh, okay.
I know that Brian and I spoke this morning, and we had a private matter to take care of tonight. What I wanted to do is give you a quick summary of last night's per se community meeting. We discussed the athletic facility. And based on that particular meeting, the, the items that are listed for you there were discussed by the group. And I believe is the direction the group last night would like to head. I didn't put any personal or subjective feeling into this, but looking at it, I can read them aloud for the people at home, but the suggestions were, number one, separate the locker room facility and the fieldhouse into two projects. The locker room facility should be the top priority. The locker room facility and restroom should be built near the existing stadium. The locker room facility should be built with additional square footage for growth and storage area for equipment, possibly a second floor, very similar to what we did at the DO for storage. The construction of the fieldhouse should be put on hold until sufficient funds are obtained to build an appropriate-sized facility for our size of district. There was one presented last night, roughly around three or so million dollars. The coaches and people present were concerned about the size of the court, some of the availability of space in that. So instead of putting up something they felt that may need to be expanded in the future, they would rather discuss in further detail, along with location, and then come up with a plan. So they truly wanted to separate that out and take a look simply at the, the portion without the, the fieldhouse to it. The fieldhouse location needs to be, need additional study before a location is chosen. And they were presented with a tentative plan where it would be located behind where the concession stand currently is. Some of them felt that that would be restrictive for both student transportation, parking, and whether or not there would be expandability at that location. They're not saying it's a total no-go, but they said they would like to look at other locations on our existing site to see if there's a, a better place. So there was total open-mindedness, nobody made a firm stand it has to be here or there, but we simply discussed that they would like to have further study of that. The west-side bleachers are in poor condition and may need to be replaced within the next few years. And Athletic Director Lisa mentioned that we passed inspection this year and that getting passage in the future may become more difficult because of the condition of the bleachers. So we're going to need to keep that in mind with the project. And lastly, the existing concession stand restrooms would be closed and the space absorbed into the concession area. So what I did at the bottom then is I put the order of priority, because last night I ran through that at the end of the meeting and then asked the group, also, do their priorities. So number one, again, is the athletic locker room facility. Number two is the stadium restrooms. Three is the west-side stadium bleachers. A lot of people would put those into a category maybe called Phase 1. Number four would be the fieldhouse and its discussion. And five would be concession stand renovations. So I know several of your board members are there. You had to bite your tongue a little bit last night because of sunshine rolls, but we wanted to make sure all five board members were caught up on that. Been talking with Brian, again, he is going to, because it happened last night, there was no way to have anything presented, presentable in terms of any changes for tonight, but he is hoping to come back next month with some examples of what the group discussed last night.
I didn't think concessions was prioritized that low. I thought it was one...
I thought it was one of the things that they wanted to, like, I got the impression that we were going to renovate what we had and where it was. I didn't think it went to the bottom of the list, like, after the fieldhouse, because of the whole bathroom portion of that, mainly.
And again, I'm not saying I'm right or wrong, or you're right or wrong. I took it as, again, new restrooms were required, that those would be put out there somewhere, and that concession, it seemed that they were concerned about shutting themselves down during the seasons.
Right.
So, in other words, I put this down based on what the school needs to take care of from the discussion last night. I mean, the concessions, we can sell out of them, out of that particular place without any changes. I believe the booster organization would like to see some changes, absorb some of the restroom space for storage, that type of thing. But I, it can be bumped up, this is, this is just.
Just a summary of last night.
Yeah, a summary of last night. It's not a right or wrong, but it's just, as I heard it, as I repeated it to them, as they repeated it back, I thought I had heard. But each person has a different perspective. I mean, that's what you five have to decide, is, you may have my opinion of this.
When I saw this, my first thought was what you just said, because I thought it was not at the bottom either, I thought that was kind of a bigger deal.
And I'll just make one additional comment, because I was here yesterday for the meeting. And I do, I did appreciate a lot of the conversation in the back and forth, and there was a lot of great ideas. I would have liked to have seen more of the community involved in, you know, more coaches from the other sports in attendance, and I'm, you know, in, so that they could all, because whatever, what we were originally presenting affects everyone. And it just didn't seem like everyone was giving that input, so.
Were the other coaches just not able to attend?
I, I can't speak for them. I know that the message went out, I don't know who received it.
Did we reach out to the youth sports at all?
I personally didn't. I reached out to the board and I reached out to the high school and let them know that we were gonna be discussing this. I know the boosters were contacted, I'm not sure who they contacted. I guess I looked at it as a school project. It was basically announced, and I kind of left up to people to come, just like any other community meeting. I didn't send out any personal invites other than to the five board members here.
When does our decision have to be made by?
Well, I think it depends on what you decide to do. Brian mentioned last night, if you take out the fieldhouse, you could save time, you could save money. If you, the bigger you go, the more involved you are, the longer it's going to take. I think that you also would have to look at the timing of what you want to do, so if you were to tackle the stands, you probably wouldn't want them to be tackled in a timeframe where it doesn't disturb some of your major events. So I think that would all have to be done. So I, I would say that you'd want to begin the process of planning, like we are now, so that if there are some changes or adjustments, or if it turns out to not fit within the budget, you have time to make changes, just like we're doing with the building projects. So I know that wasn't a good answer, but the quicker we get the design done, the idea portion done, then that's, I think it's easier for the architects to come back with some examples, and that we can kind of look at and like or dislike and discuss like we are tonight.
It's gotta be done by August of 2021.
Right. I think you said we need to start by March.
And it'd be like six months with just the 7,000 square foot. So, I mean, I'd put it close to January, you'd want to start construction, you want to go bid documents and bidding out, so you probably want to, you know, be in, you know, at least latest, probably June of the next year, I would think, to get, make sure they have plenty of time to get everything done.
You will lose the locker rooms in May of 2021. You'll turn the building over to Robertson for construction at the end of May. So I think that, just like last night, with the input that was there, I guess we want to make sure the board is aware of what input we have gotten so far. Should there be more, they're more than welcome to share that. But we need to make sure that if you liked or disliked what you heard last night, that we have that debate, because the architects are gonna need to know, you know, are we going with what, you know, the smaller community crowd last night was presenting and the coaches? Are we going a different direction? You know, what's the, what's the direction the board would like to go?
Couple things, this is a presentation, hopefully we'll move this to an agenda item. If we want to do a discussion during the presentation.
It's an information session.
Doesn't need to, are you saying, do we need to move this to an agenda item in order to discuss it?
This is supposed to be a presentation part of the agenda, if we want to keep discussing it now, or add an agenda item, or, I don't know your thoughts.
Roberts, why?
I cannot remember, I don't know.
Okay, that's.
That's what I'm trying to, yeah.
Are you telling me, do I need to move this to an agenda item?
I'm not telling you anything, I'm just.
I would think we just discuss it now, and if you don't want to discuss it, we move on to other agenda items.
Yeah, if you want to do, yeah. If Eric has anything to add.
Do you have, did you have anything to add, Eric?
No, just, I guess I, from the timing perspective, you know, we were anticipating trying to have this, what I'll call Phase One, design and ready to go out to contractors for pricing in the spring.
Sure, okay.
So ideally, anything you want in that first phase, if we could have that decided, you know, by November, December at the latest, so that we can put all the documents together. If that helps you with the timeframe, and then anything that isn't necessarily in that Phase One, we could talk further about how that, those future improvements happen down the road in a phased situation.
Okay.
The one thing that I noted that kind of goes along with what we just saw with the blueprint, softball made a good point last night, whereas if we went with having that locker room and restroom facility up on the, I guess it would be what, northwest quadrant of the field? That would leave restrooms far away from softball. So if we could find a way to keep the restrooms that are currently attached to the high school, I think that would be at least a priority for me. I can't say for everyone else, but that was a pretty legitimate concern, I thought.
What, what are we trying to get to right now?
I'm sharing the information so that the board could discuss it, just because they couldn't discuss it last night. But if you needed to move it to an agenda item, then let's move it to an agenda item or move on, one or the other.
I'm not ready to make a motion on it.
I'm not either.
I think a lot, a lot more work needs to happen.
I would agree.
Quickly, yeah. A lot more work.
But can you, I mean, can you give Garmin Miller some general ideas? Do you like the upper northwest quadrant of location and just the 7,000? I guess that would help them with designing it where it goes at, or?
I don't feel comfortable saying whether I like it or not, when I'm not sure that we've got enough input from those people that are gonna be using it.
So you're suggesting another public meeting? A little more personalized invitations this time?
Or at least not personalized invitations. I'm saying maybe to spread it out a little better to the community, and maybe that was our fault to not do a better direction of who we wanted it to go to. But we, maybe we need to say, we would like this to go to all of the coaches in the district, all of the middle school coaches. We would like an invitation to go to the youth sports as well. We would like it to go to all of the members of the booster organizations. And so on and so forth. And so perhaps I will do a better job with that as the president, and make sure that that happens for the next meeting. So, I will do that. If we could come up with a time when you all are available, when Brian is available for another meeting? And we could do, unfortunately, the same thing that we did last night again. I can't promise you that more people will attend, but.
But at least they'll have the invitation.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll have him reach out tomorrow, Wednesday.
Okay.
You don't want, really, Brian doing anything right now until we have the second meeting.
Nope, no, absolutely.
Yeah, so it was out, yeah.
Waste of money.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, we have the district report card. Mrs. Perkins.
Right. Well, it's our time of year to share the results of the report card with everybody. Perfect, thank you. So, let's just give you an overall picture of what our actual letter grades are for each component. So, we had a C in achievement, which covers the performance index and the indicator, so how well we did on each specific test in each grade, and then how many kids scored anywhere from advanced to basic. K through three literacy, we have a D in that. And I'll go into a little bit more statistics and percentages on down that might help explain some of these letter grades a little bit more. But that looks at our, obviously, our K through three kids, and how well they're doing in reading, and the third grade reading guarantee. Our gap closing, and that looks at how we're moving our most vulnerable populations of kids, our ELL kids, our students with disabilities, et cetera. Our progress, we have an A, and that is our growth. So that means that overall, we are growing all our kids in the district, and we're doing a really great job of that. So that is definitely a positive. Graduation this year is an A, that is up from previous years with a B, where we have both an A in the four and the five year. And then prepared for success is a D, and that is how well do we look at our high school kids, prepared for the future, ACT, AP, honors diploma, et cetera. And then that equates to an overall letter grade of a C. And if you have questions, you can stop me anytime. So these are actually our indicators and our percentages. 80% is passage by the state for all tests. I put up last year's and this year's to give you an idea of kind of where we're at. It is a little skewed, I can use fourth grade ELA, for example. We did go down this year from 76 to 66%, however, the entire state went down. So when you're looking at these scores on the right-hand side, the highlighted areas in green are the indicators that we met, so we earned the 80%. Obviously, the other ones are not. But the, on the flip side, we are higher than the state average in all of them, as well as typically the trend for the tests that went down versus the tests that went up, we are on track with. So we're kind of moving along with everybody in the state. These are our math scores. You know, I think unfortunately, when you look at things and you see only a few areas in the bright green, that's disappointing, because that's a reflection on that we're actually meeting the 80%. But at the same time, our growth data is tremendous, so it says we're growing kids. We just have to work towards moving that bar in achievement. So, I'll take a little comparison there. And then science and social studies. So this has been always two areas that scores have historically been higher as a state, as well as in this district, and so we continue to do a pretty good job in this area as well. Okay. So, some positive achievements, because when you look at that, that kind of says, oh, are we doing a great job? So when you look at the components, overall, we are the highest in the county, tied with Brandle in one area, and in the other six areas, we're the second highest in the county right behind them. So over the entire grade card, we're the top one or two in Licking County, and you can find all that data online. So we're actually doing really well in comparison to the people surrounding us. Once again, we had an A for progress, which is what I was talking about, the growth. And then the subcategories below, for gifted, students in the lowest 20% of achievement, and students with disabilities, we had all As or Bs in that subgroup, actually, we had all As and one B. So we're doing really well, growing our kids. A couple of just different little facts, but I already told you the four and five year graduation rates are As, so we're improving our numbers with that. We had 97.9% of our third grade students meet the third grade reading guarantee. Obviously, we're always striving for 100%, but that's a pretty high percentage overall. We had 45% of our student population score advanced or accelerated on the state test, and that's the highest two categories. We had 218 kids earn a remediation free score in ACT or an honors diploma, and that's also accumulated in your prepared for success score. We met the chronic absenteeism indicator with 11%, so we're doing a good job addressing attendance and working on those attendance plans. And our PI score, which is how many kids score in each band, the basic, limited, proficient, et cetera, we had growth in that across all achievement levels. So we're also improving in that area. So to give you kind of idea, when you're looking at those letter grades, like, what does that mean to you? So we had an A on the progress measure, and only 18% of all districts in the state of Ohio had an A. So that kind of tells you that we look really great as far as that's concerned. And then we had a D on prepared for success, which is when you're looking at your ACT, your honors diploma, et cetera. But so did 83% of the state. So it's not that we're settling for the D, or that we don't want to do better, or that we're not having conversations and looking at things, but at the same time, when you're looking at 83% of the state of Ohio, potentially, you know, the indicator could be a little skewed. The same with, we have an overall C, and 85% of the state has a C or lower. So, you know, our goal obviously is to move with a pendulum to a B, you know, in the next year, hopefully, but that's kind of where we're at right now. And then, oh, that was the achievement method, and then 68% of the schools receive a letter grade a C or below for the overall score. So, and then lastly, like I said earlier, we have, we're above all state averages in achievement. Actually, we're pretty much well above, but just to give you a kind of idea of what others are looking at. So what are some of the things that we're doing this year that we put in place? And a lot of this, you know, you get your state testing data after the school year starts, so these are the things we're doing based on last year and having conversations and kind of predictions. So we implemented a new math program, K through five. We're also doing a new math program exploration in grades K, or six through eight. We implemented a new phonemic awareness program in PK and K. We added additional guidance counselors, which, you know, you think that's not the academic, but supporting the emotional and social needs of those kids is very important and helps the academics. We're doing continued onsite and external PD, monthly data team meetings set around individual and building data. And we're having targeted discussions around the KQV literacy, gap closing and PI, and how we can move those components on the grade card. We're actually working with an outside entity to come in and do, actually, next week, some admin professional development, so we can start getting somebody else to take a look at our grade card, our data, and offer us ideas for how we can move the bar. So, that's kind of the box. If you have any questions, or anything you want more information on?
I know you've discussed this before, but just kind of for everyone, we're, we're passing 97.8 kids on our third grade reading guarantee, so how do we have a D in K through three literacy? Tell us that again.
Sure. So, the K through three literacy component, which, okay, let me reverse. So first of all, the third grade reading guarantee, and then being proficient on the state test are two different things.
Two different things, okay.
Okay, so the expectation for third grade reading guarantee is lower than proficiency for the state test, which.
Gotcha, okay.
Doesn't make a ton of sense, so let's just, let the states aside. So, the K through literacy measure looks at how many students in each grade band do you put on reading improvement plans?
Okay.
So basically, they're not on track. So you give a fall screener, you realize they're not where they should be, you put them on a reading improvement plan, and then how many of those kids in that grade band come off that plan?
Okay.
And how many stay out? And that's how it's figured out. One of the things that we've looked at, and Tony's done a great job helping with this, is that we are incorporating the writing component this year for putting students on RIMPs. It won't help us for, it's like a year, and then we're all, so we're gonna be a little bit behind, but taking a look at, we're getting hit big time on the writing aspect, a lot of these achievement tests. So taking a look at kids by giving a writing diagnostic, who are not where they need to be with that, and then also placing them on RIMPs. And we have found out other districts have been doing that, so that's something new. I mean, it's just a support piece, putting someone on a RIMP is not, just for when you're K through three, it's not, you know, forever, but it's definitely something to help them along the way. So that's how that measure is helpful. If that makes sense. If it doesn't make sense. How much time does it commit?
Right.
Other questions, or? Thank you very much, and I think at this time, we're gonna continue on like we did last year with the continuous improvement plans. We have kind of adapted a little bit, we're doing like an abridged version, so you have all the information, but we're going to highlight kind of the important things moving forward. And so, Doran from Kirkersville is gonna lead me first.
Well, good evening, you want to talk a little bit about Kirkersville, how we're gonna continue to make progress and help our students continue to learn and grow. As you know, we break many kindergarten, some have been through preschool and through all kinds of support, some have not. So, we're starting with kids kind of all over the place, and we want to identify where they're at first and then help them grow from there. At the top left there is our results from last year. Those are our kiddos, kind of where they scored, using mainly our math testing and reading and math, and as well as our DRA assessment, which is given by our teachers, where students kind of read a book and answer some questions. So, those are the students that were on track at the end of last year in terms of kindergarten, which are now our first graders, and then our first graders which have moved to second grade. So, again, what we're trying to do there is look at those goals in the top right now, in the orange over there, and say, okay, what are we looking for? Well, at Kirkersville, we want each student, kindergarten, first grade, in both reading and math to be on level. That is our goal when they leave Kirkersville. We're going to work really hard to do that, but there's some things that kind of we have to look at to help close that gap that we talked about. So, there's four or five blocks down there, middle right, the red one there, talks about our technology exposure. We have some kiddos that have a lot of technology exposure when they come into school. They've worked on an iPad at home, they've had some access to technology through their current family situations, some have not. So, we have to take some time to teach them how to just do some of those things. Next one there is our content exposure. Again, some parents have worked with their students, you know, coming into school, some have allowed them to kind of work on their own, and maybe not working as much. So, we want to fight, figure out where they're at again, what content have they been exposed to, where can we start with them, and what do we need to help them get where we need them to go? This is a new one for us this year, the social-emotional concerns. We have lots of students coming to us that have been through a lot in their lives already at such a young age. And so, how can we help them, first of all, deal with that before we even get into the content side of things? We have to help them figure out some of their emotions. We're enrolling a lot of foster students and things of that sort in the district. So, they're coming to us with some things that will help them sort through before we even begin that kind of learning process. The last one there is our language exposure. We have a lot of students coming to us that are qualifying for ELL services. So, how do we help that be, not be a barrier in terms of their learning? So, when we think about that, we got to go down to the bottom there into our programmatic changes. And there's a couple of key things that we kind of changed this year from last year that we think will help our students improve on their achievement. First one there is our title services. Previously, we had title supports that would go to the classroom, take three or four students, take them to another area and work with them on a couple of skills. What we decided to do this year is put that right into the classroom. So, now, our title support goes into the classroom, works with the teacher while the teacher's doing centers. So, a teacher's working with a group, students are maybe working on technology, students are working on another sort of reading, math assignment. But that teacher's also in there working with those low kids, helping right along with the teacher. So, the teacher's kind of giving them some guidance and support, so it's nice to see they're in the classroom now. So, they're not just helping a few kids, but they're one of those centers that is moving around, so it's really nice to have that support. Next, with the tech lessons, we implemented tech lessons at Kirkersville two years ago. And what that is, is every other week, students get cards in the classroom, Chrome cards, and they work on basic skills. The first tech lesson for kindergarten was how do we open it, and we had a whole PowerPoint on how you just turn it on. And then, we moved slowly into first grade, where we want them to be able to log into, say, Google Classroom, things of that sorts. Even at the end of first grade, they would do their animal writing reports on there. So, we're really trying to help, we know testing third and fourth grade, they're using that computer. So, we want to get them exposed to those skills. So, every other week, again, they're doing that. But what I want to do is work with Mrs. Holman, who's one of our coaches, to help improve those lessons. All right, we're seeing our kids can, they can type, but they're not sure how to click in the box where they have to type the answer, maybe on the third or fourth grade test. So, we want to improve those lessons to make sure that we're meeting the kids' needs when it comes to technology. The next one, their ELL support has been added also. We have Mrs. Krasinski, she's in our building two to three days a week, again, in the classroom, working with our ELL students, trying to help them adjust not only to the language, but as well as what's happening in terms of content in the classroom. So, her support has been increased from last year, so that's really nice to see. And the final one there, I really, really, well, actually, I skipped Bridges, excuse me, Bridges, Mrs. Perkins talked a little bit about that, that new math program. It's a change from what we've had. Teachers love it, the number corner we have up, the kids are doing a lot of hands-on things. I went in the other day, there's one kid laying in the middle of the floor, and they have the UniFix keeps out in their measuring room. So, talking about estimating, counting by tens, lots of cool things going on with that. So, I think that new program, while it's going to take some time for the teachers to get in there and get used to it, because what we changed, it's a complete change really from what we've been doing in the past, but I really think we're going to see some benefits from that. Then the last one there is our guidance counselor. We're able to have a guidance counselor full-time. I cannot tell you how much of an impact in the first three, four weeks this has been. It has been phenomenal. Mrs. Solis, who we added at Kirkersville, is new to the district, an unbelievable resource. She's been in the classroom meeting with kids, especially the newer kids come in, again, that may have trauma, she's in a small group with them, she's working with the teachers on that. We also have her doing in-classroom lessons. So, once a month, she's going to go into the classroom, she's going to do a lesson on different character traits, different things that the teachers see they need. And then, she's also building small groups. So, she'll have kiddos come out, maybe, you know, if there's a home situation, a divorce situation, or some trauma, she's going to do some small groups with that, friendship groups, things of that sorts, to help our kiddos on the social-emotional side. So, those are the things that we're going to really work on at Kirkersville this coming year. A lot of good things in place, hopefully, this is going to get us where we want it to go. Any questions?
Just a comment, that, boy, this, our society is changing so much from when I went to school. I mean, with the divorces, the single parents, the, all this other stuff, that, yeah, we've got to focus on helping these kids get through those tough times. Glad that you're focusing on that.
Thank you, I agree, but then, thank you for the Have any other questions, then we'll turn it over to Mr. Pratt from the task board.
All right, I know I'm on the clock, and last year was pretty detailed, so I'm going to shorten that here. So, Mrs. Perkins, what are the state report card? So, I guess the first box, I might take a little shot right from that, but if we look at our last year, you probably have a chance to pull those up. We want to go from year to year, so our goal is to meet the state indicator of eighty percent proficiency in reading and math, which is still going to be a continued goal, as you just, for opportunity improvement. We did not meet that goal, we did increase our proficiency. Except on the twelve percent, it's actually about seven percent in reading and fourteen percent in math. We made growth, we obviously, you know, are closing the gap, that's huge. Obviously, having a goal of almost a hundred percent of our students reaching the TGRT, we still want to continue that. And then, finally, we did have a goal of all of our kids making a year's growth. We had sixty-three percent of our kids in reading and sixty-five point five percent of our kids in math making a year's growth. That is spring to spring. If you factor in, you know, taking out that fall piece, if you go from fall to spring, the number's going to be significantly higher. There's always the math, cannot driven, because we continue to take, it tests a tread to them, and then, two-five to take a test now, so, you know, the data, the data is what it is. But if we look for improvement, I mentioned the first two on there, the two that were new for this year are the increase in second-grade reading proficiency projection to seventy percent in the spring. This is kind of the new column in the green, it's perfect, projected proficiency when kids come in in the fall, we can see it in the winter, and then in the spring. We're at fifty-two percent right now, so our kids, you know, if we're, they're going to take the test now, that's not going to be good for us. We know we need to definitely increase that, so we'll talk about kind of how that, get that done. And the fourth thing, or the fourth goal, which I don't know if it was added here, so Mrs. Perkins took it off my sheet, but it says eighty percent of all the taskless students will meet the end-of-the-year writing expectations. As was previously pointed out, that's a big focus across our whole district, and I'll talk about that as we move down as well. So, Mr. Werman mentioned the root causes. Arts are fairly similar from last year, lacking foundational skills in reading and math, social-emotional barriers, as he mentioned and talked about. Math, the continued math content rate, which we're actually picking up a lot in our Bridges program, and writing and typing, stay on. So, if we go down to the program, programmatic changes, the big part that we did, and once again, just kind of reiterating what Brad said, the restructure, we restructured teams to provide targeted support. So, we do have EL supports in the classroom, we have title supports in the classroom, we have, everybody's in one area. The nice thing about that is when you're teaching, it's easy communication, that you're not, typically, our title supports are out of the classroom, so you don't have that communication time built in. Not only do we have the time in the classroom where they can talk, and they can listen, they can hear, and they can communicate, we built that time before and after school, they have planning time together, so it's a lot of time for them to talk about kids. Also, our literacy collaborative, guided reading and word work and response to text are going to be our big focus. We've talked a lot this last year, moving into this year, the writing is broken down into two components. The one that's, you're going to go through the whole writing process, we can go through multiple editing phases, right, and it takes a while to produce one longer piece, which your teacher helps you produce. And there's another one where you have, you have to look at a passage and respond to it. So, starting at, you know, the K level all the way up, getting more exposure to responding to text, because when you go on a state test, that's what you're expected to do. Not only are you expected to do that in third grade, but you're expected to be able to type it in a short amount of time, which makes it very challenging for kids that struggle with their typing, and they have to then process, because you really don't have enough time to write it out, and then type it out. So, you know, the more practice they get with responding to the text, the better they're going to get. And we also increased some typing time throughout the day within our second, third grade classes, as well as really utilizing all of our, our computer lab time, because we do have a computer special that we continue to build on. We all, we've added, once again, the full-time guidance counselor and social worker, which has absolutely been huge. We've expanded our mentorship program. Mr. Tancheski, the high school, really pumped it up this year, and we have half of our mentors, we only had twelve last year, went up to twenty-five this year. Over half of them are from high school, so we have, we have high school students helping our kids, especially our kids that truly need a mentor. Bridge's math implementation, really excited about this program. It's, previously, now, I'm sure you've heard, it spirals everything, but that was our missing component. It's fantastic. We've added a gift intervention specialist, Mrs. LeJune, who is fantastic. And I kind of pointed out before that we've added this collaboration time to teachers before and after school, and it's very focused, because we were able to take all of our title kids, instead of pulling from multiple classrooms, we only pulled from a certain amount of classrooms, we provide the more intensive LLI support. So, we get all them together, and the title gets to team and collaborate every week during the day, so normal playing time in the outside, they get at least fifty-five minutes to do that at the beginning or the end of the day. So, you can't beat that, the more time you're talking about, you know, kids and how they're, where they're at, and what we need to do to improve instruction, you know, the more, more purpose we're going to make in the classroom. So, I think I'm down. Once you get any questions.
I have one
Sure.
Question in the box with the green title, building level and process. When it says spring nineteen, can I make an assumption that that, that's first grade?
Yeah, so you're looking at
So, like, spring nineteen, they were in first grade, and now they're in second. Okay, I'm just clarifying.
They're taking an MPT test, and now they're taking the two-five test. So, they're taking forty-three question test, with a tread to them, and then they have to read every single passage. Is stronger. Thank you.
Request to speak on agenda items, Teamsters Local four thirteen, and Southwest Licking Education Association. All right, how about approval of minutes from the August fifteenth, twenty nineteen regular meeting?
Motion approval. Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
I'm staying.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. If that passes. We have a financial report, we need a motion to approve, and then we can discuss.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Cleveland Air's financial report for August thirty-first. It's a very routine month, nothing out of the ordinary. We're still working on putting together budget estimates for receipts and expenditures, so it's really hard to tell where we're at right now. Our revenue is up a little bit overall by about three-hundred thousand, and our expenditure is also about two-hundred thousand, looking at last year. So, again, it's fairly routine, once we start looking September, October, we'll have budget estimates in there to see where we're actually at, we're actually doing. I believe we'll be, we'll be doing fine. Significant expenditures are listed at the bottom, again, really nothing out of the ordinary there. Three questions I can answer for you?
Anyone? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, that passes. Item number six, the personnel consent calendar, items A through M.
Motion to approve items A through M, number six, A through M. Second.
All right, any discussion? No, all right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That motion passes. All right, we have lots of business items.
Yes, we do.
All right. I'm assuming we need to take these, oh, yeah, definitely one by one. We have a post-bid LFI MOU for the four-five building.
A and B could be combined if you wanted to, because they both relate to construction project.
Okay, we can do that then.
Directly relate to each other.
Okay.
I move approval seven A and B.
I'll second. I'll second that.
So, you got a second?
Yeah.
As a, Ms. Taggery indicated, this is our post-bid LFI MOU for the four-five building. Right now, our LFI is approximately three-point-six million dollars. That's basically, we had about one-point-two-five million dollars in our project, in our basic, our bond issue as LFI. So, the difference, basically, you know, two-point-one is coming out of school district fund. So, part of it's coming out of PI contingency, we had some money set back for that, and the rest of it's getting covered through interest income from our bond issue. Kind of if you approve A, you need to approve B, because B is actually authorizing the transfer from our bond local share into our LFI account. I don't know why the state doesn't care, but that's how the state wants it done, so that we can spend that on the project, you know, LFI MOU. So, again, just, it's nothing new, numbers haven't changed, it's just money, there's contingency in there and stuff, if we can get some money back, hopefully, that money can be used towards other projects or whatsoever. But I'd ask the board, please, approve those two items. Like, answering specific questions you might have about either one?
Questions, anyone? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
All right, that passes. All right, item C, Licking County BCAC plan. Is that you, Mr. Jones, or is that you, Mr. Geno?
Do you want to do a motion first before we discuss it?
Oh, is it a motion? Sorry.
Motion approval. Second.
Okay. Now, Mr. Jones?
Kind of, basically, by law, we're required to have a BCA business, BCAC committee. Obviously, you're allowed to join, basically, Licking County's, ESC's BCAC committee. So, basically, this is their plan, they put together, and resolutions for all school districts who have decided to join with the county. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Geno, about that?
Just required each year. You either do it locally, or you do it through the county.
And then, we have to upload it onto OD's website, so they know we did it.
If we didn't do this, we'd have to do one ourselves, right? We'd have to go out and find business people, and they'd be part of the, whatever.
Some communities are large enough that they might have
They'd do it themselves?
Want us to talk at school, so it is a choice for the board each year.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, that passes. Item D, superintendent search.
That's back to me. So, basically, I know I'm doing a lot of talking tonight, but try to make quick. So, as everybody knows, Mr. Geno is retiring at the end of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, and Mrs. Perkins has graciously decided, agreed to fill in as our interim superintendent from, well, January first, whatever.
You said December thirty-first, two thousand
Two thousand nineteen. Two thousand nineteen, it's not here, Bob, you didn't know about that yet. And then, Mrs. Perkins agreed to stay on for seven months while we conduct a search. Now, I said in the past that we basically, we've got a quote before from the OSBA, and then, like I said, I reached out to the Licking County ESC, they are now using Finney Leaders, and they want to meet with the board first before putting a quote together, because they want to basically see what all we want. You know, there's probably all different kinds of options for searches, you want community involved, you know, putting together a profile, what kind of superintendent you want, go on a search. I'm not sure exactly I'm not sure exactly how long all that takes.
Yeah.
But no, we probably need to have somebody hired by mid 2000, I mean, by April, May, I would think, at the latest, 2020, so they can start August 1st, 2020, um, so that we can back up timeline. And again, I don't know the exact timeline, so, um, I wanted to get the board's thought, because it seems like time is moving very fast. We're almost in September already.
Right.
You know, October. Um, what's your thought on how you want to go about picking a firm to conduct our search? Uh, and that's really what this is all about. How do you want to get about doing that? Do you just want to pick one, or do you want to interview two or three? Um, what are your thoughts on that? And then if we want to interview multiple ones, then maybe we can set up a special board meeting just for that purpose, to bring them in, do presentations, and then you as a board can select who you feel is, is the right firm. But, you know, if you want to do that, two, three, you just want to hire one, what's your thoughts as a board?
What does the ESC want to do, again?
They're basically, they're have, they want to meet with the board and kind of find out what all you want them to do. I guess there's lots of customizable options for a soup tent search. Um, I can't tell you what those are. I just want the email I received back from the Licking County ESC is that there's a lot of customizable stuff. So you'd rather meet with the board, talk to you, see what you want, and then put together an estimate for what it's going to cost. Um, especially with finding leaders being involved.
Do they do that? I mean, it just seems like ESC...
But it sounds like they, they use a...
Yeah, they, they originally wanted to offer to do it himself.
Right.
Uh, but there's, um, some, but then now they're working with a search firm called Finney Leaders.
I think, personally, I think we should interview.
I agree.
Yeah, I do too.
A few different firms.
Okay. Do you have preference on two, three, 15, I mean?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
I disagree with that part.
Do you, okay, thank you. That's just what you would. Do you have a, a number you want, three to just?
I'm trying to wrap my mind around the process. Um, OSBA also offers...
Yes.
So they would be one of the people we would conceivably interview.
Right now, I see, I would see OSBA, ESC slash Finney Leaders, and then see if there's other ones out there. There probably are other ones out there, depending if you want to get to just state two, or if you want to go to three, four, see if I can find one or two more who would be willing to come and do that presentation. I think we don't want to be here all night, so we want to keep it 15, 20 minute presentation, you know, maybe 10 minutes to do questions, and then bring the next group in, something like that, half an hour each group or something. Um, unless you think less than that, I just don't know what your thoughts are. I just know it takes time to get somebody on board, then from there, decide, again, how to do it, what profile, who all you want to be involved in, putting together that profile, and then using their expertise on a timeline to get out, to advertise and so forth.
Yeah.
So it sounds like we do want to do a, a basically meeting, do you have a ballpark, do something you want to try and do in October?
We have to.
Yeah, I'd say sooner rather than later.
Yeah, sooner than later. Um, and then, how many firms do you want involved? We know we have two.
I'd say three to, three to four.
Three to four.
Three to four.
Not 27.
Uh, with a preference to be on a Thursday night, or does it care what night of the week, if we do a special meeting? Do you have a preference as a board?
It really doesn't matter, as long as there's enough notice.
Yeah.
Yeah, there will be, we'll make sure. Um, so I, what I'll do is I'll spend the next week or so trying to find four companies. Um, and then from there, find some dates, I'll reach out and see what dates, board members are available. We can schedule that meeting, do these, you know, do you like the idea of like a half an hour max each one?
Oh, yeah.
Or is that too long?
I think that's too long.
Didn't even say 20 minutes.
Yeah, yeah, 20 minutes, give it like five, 10 minutes change over there now.
Like 10 to 12, 15 for a presentation, and then...
Yeah.
Uh, 10, five, 10 minutes, whatever, for questions.
Yep, I'm good with that. That's how I'll let them know it's going to be set up.
Okay. Can you make sure you're, um, on anything with, looking for the new superintendent, superintendent searches? Just make sure you're keeping, um, Mrs. Perkins in the loop for all that stuff, since she's going to be the interim.
Do I have to?
Yes, please, while that's going on.
Yeah, I know. Geez, on your side, I see that. Um, okay, so that's, the idea is we're set up a special board meeting, look, three to four firms, one night, max 25 minutes, presentation questions.
Perfect.
That's all I need for that one, thank you.
Yeah, if that works. All right. All right, we've got... In lieu of transportation, we need a motion for that, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Jones?
Um, I believe we had a, a community mayor file for, in lieu of transportation for last year, and I guess it just got missed on the board approval.
Okay.
So this is retroback to last year to approve lieu of participate, uh, transportation, so that we can, uh, pay this family.
All right, go ahead.
Any questions?
Anybody else? Nope.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, that passes. We could probably do... That's what I was going to say, there's a, yeah, are there any more of those together? Yeah.
You could do F, G, and H.
H, maybe.
I, you could do them all, the rest if you want.
Yeah, the rest of them you can do together.
It's up to you, they're all different, but I think, yeah, there's nothing really...
Okay. Take a motion for one or all of F through K.
Motion approval F through K. Second.
Good. Any discussion?
Yeah, uh, one thing I do want to mention about the tuition rate, that's set by State, the higher department education. We don't have a choice on it, this is your rate if you have tuition. Obviously, we don't allow tuition students, but we do need to approve the rate. Um, do you have any things to say about the bus routes, Mr. Janelle, or anything?
I thought I'd already retired.
That's a whole other year.
Yeah, you got, you got an extra year in there.
Um, yeah, uh, the school bus routes, all we ask that, uh, as students move in and move out, that the routes can be adjusted, and that's generally done by the superintendent or the designated, which is normally tied listed out at the bus garage. So, and you're, I guess you're approving myself, and then whoever the designated would be. I've already checked, uh, so when Casey takes over, even if she's called interim, it would cover.
Okay, okay.
So she can still make that choice.
It covers that.
Yeah. This board knows that a soup tent or interim, both can do that.
Okay.
Um, 403 ban, uh, 403B plan amendment, basically, we need to make correction to our 403B plan to allow Roth and roll rollovers for employees who want to do that. Um, something that was just messed when the plan was originally approved. So just a routine, approve that. Um, do you want to talk about the retire, rehire, Mr. Janelle? Or somebody?
It's not me. Would you like to, um, we've got a teacher that is, is wanting to come back?
Sure. We have a, uh, we have a, Pam Prisinski is, was last year our teacher at Kirkersville kindergarten. Um, this year, she's working part-time, no four days a week, uh, as ESL support, uh, in the A1 running. So, uh, that, retired, she's retiring, and then, and we got to do that, steps her into the teacher path, and she went over the summer to get her credentials to do that. Um, and I, I don't know the numbers, Paula, maybe you do, are girls in ELW, she's...
Brad, 19 in kindergarten, 22 in first grade, is that already?
Looks pretty close, yep. I, I, well, we have 20 in kindergarten, we have one confirmed 19 testing, and we have this, like, first grade, and it is 16 confirmed, and we add a few more, so...
And then she also goes to the task class, and they are 22...
23.
23.
Do you have a comparison?
They're, they're identified every day.
Do you have a comparison from, uh, the previous school year to this year?
Not sure Kirkersville is big like that, too. In the state, that's what they're seeing. Um, obviously, the kids get in early, is there a lot of identifications in there in first grade? But, um, I think your numbers were similar last year. They might be slightly larger this year, Brad?
Ours is up. Um, our, our, our first grade rate last year was not as large, um, as this, like I said, the, the 16 to 19 that we have in first grade. I think last year was only eight or nine.
Oh, wow.
Then kindergarten, we had 15, I would say, started the year last year, like I said, we had, now we have 19s. And then, right now, we kind of have one that we have completed the testing, and they are confirmed, I guess, in 19 awaiting, and we're still going through testing, but there's a good chance they're going to, like, open that program as well. So we're looking at roughly 20 kindergarten, and, you know, 16 to 19 in first grade, so a lot larger than last year.
We've added staff, um, and, uh, we project, we're still waiting for scores of some kids. Uh, we were about 30 kids when I first came into this office, and we're going to be pushing on to 78. Um, I would anticipate District Y, and our preschool does not count it in that number, but if you walk around the preschool, you'll see that they're seeing a nice percentage of ELS as well.
So this is the first step, is to get permission to do the advertisement, the next meeting, we'll have a public meeting, and then the November meeting, we shall be asked to be hired on, as to retire, rehire, re that time. This is just the first step. Um, next one is Jay's proposal is concrete work. Again, this is some concrete work, to get some handicapped accessible high lakes to our sidewalks, to our baseball field, our softball field, and then to our soccer field. Um, and then also, there's, there's some areas, by the front of the bus garage, where those buses stop by the gate, that's pavement, that's pavement's crush is basically disintegrating. We need to dig that out fairly deep, 10, 12 inches, and replace it with concrete, so it can hold the weight of the buses. One change to this, uh, that was added today, was, um, we went back to the company and said, well, you get both jobs, you know, can you give us a better deal? Originally, they'd said they would do the concrete, then it was like, like 9,500 bucks if we wanted to go ahead and sand, do it, basically, put topsoil down and seed it. They came back and said, well, we'll do it for 4,500, it's 4,700. So they gave us a price break on the seeding and stuff that we weren't originally doing, but now I have the recommendation to do it, because it's going to be, rather out to doing the sidewalks, might as well have it finished, but topsoil down, hydroseed it, and make sure it's all ready to go. If they don't do it, we have to ourselves. So that was added, I think that was about 4,700 dollars to that total. Um, so that was the only change. And the last one was settlement agreement with Krueger's Company. Um, as I mentioned, they had filed a property tax, basically a property valuation complaint, wanting to reduce their value from approximately 5.5 main to 3.8. Um, so we worked our attorney through Licking County, and then basically the BOR, Board Revisions, um, and then also, there are things, and we negotiated settlement with Krueger's. Um, instead of being 55, it's going to be like 51,000, or 5,150, way more than what they wanted, 3.8.
Right.
And then also, they agreed to make a 20,000, our payment to the school district, to make us whole for tax years 17, 18, and then 19, they can adjust our rates to make us whole that way. So it's a, it's a win-win, you know, for the school district, um, but basically, they got a little bit of tax break, but we're going to be made whole, and it won't affect us in the end. So that's everything.
Good.
All right.
All right, any more questions? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, that passes. We have, uh, item eight, contracts and agreements, A and B. Need a motion?
Motion approval A and B.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Paula, do you have anything to say about this?
We have, um, all our seats filled, we have eagling, and, uh, we've had a couple of our students who've been to our district, um, who require during period services, um, providers, that we, we just don't provide those services in district at this time. So we have some kids that go to the Pumps hearing period program, the Pumps City Schools, and some who go to upper Arlington programs in the ESC.
All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We've got number nine, treasures items, A through D.
Motion approval nine A through D.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
First one's donations, and we always appreciate those, we, we thank you. Second one's the NAL certificate, uh, has some, basically, timing issue with the purchase order and invoices getting in, um, so I asked the board to look at that.
That's a toolbox.
Yeah, data toolbox, and the, so, again, just timing issues, basically, with getting things done. Uh, it always happens at the beginning of the school year, to get everything closed out and so forth, so I asked the board to approve those. Uh, transfers, those are our usual transfers each year. Uh, the first three are to, for our debt payments, our tax person, or per approved for tax anticipation notes. Just so you know, the very top one, 2009, this is the final payment. So basically, December 1st, 2019, got the right year this time, the, that one will be paid off, and that was the money used to purchase the road in Smokey 40.
Woo!
So, to purchase that land there, 180 acres, so that one will be paid off, and, um, we'll free up some money for PI, or to use for other projects that we may need in district. Um, and then the last one is our half mil maintenance that we have to transfer in for the OFCC CFAB project for 23 years, and I asked the board to approve that. And then statement purposes, uh, getting those up, done for beginning of year, fairly routine.
All right, any questions? Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Right, that motion passes. Number 10, Superintendent's Items.
Really just two quick items. Uh, the first item, again, is the attendance update, uh, that should be attached, if you take a look at that. Uh, we were able to get a little better hold on the withdrawals, uh, so we were a little over forty-four-ten, uh, at the beginning of the month. We're at forty-three-eighty-seven. Again, that's, uh, per se, bottom two seats. Uh, we do have, uh, we oversee forty-six-hundred-and-eighty-one students, but that would include students going to other schools, uh, so we don't count those in our enrollment count. So, again, uh, if you look at the, the bottom, I went ahead and put a delta name down there, uh, and that's just simply, I, over on the far right side, you can see the, uh, where it was left off in May. In May, we had four thousand two hundred and fifty-eight students. So if you take the difference or the delta, which I have for you, we have a hundred and twenty-nine more students. You can also see, uh, I believe for the very first time, uh, you can see that every, uh, class is now over three hundred.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, preschool's obviously not over three hundred.
Yeah, they sure are.
Robin, could you put up the slides?
That's amazing.
Uh, Clay and I talk about this quite a bit. Uh, he enjoys utilizing some of the slides of his presentation. I think he stuck around. If you'd like to add some comments here and there, that's, that's perfectly, uh, okay in my opinion, so speak up. There's, there's a little story this time, uh, very quickly, uh, went out to fly over the, uh, the, the new connection road. Well, I, I had forgotten, but I did remember that there were two sets of power lines out there.
Uh-oh, no.
And I don't have the video for you tonight, I could have brought it, but I didn't want to waste your time. Uh, I actually was flying down the, the road and, uh, remembered, and I should have looked at the sign, they had a little, like, green placard or yellow placard that reminds you there's power lines above, so I did hesitate, but I go right through, uh, right between uh, two of the lines that are about, I don't know, eighteen, twenty inches apart, so it was a little, uh, little, little fun. But this is the picture that, uh, Clay used in his presentation. It's a picture that we hope to provide, uh, you know, as we take these pictures for you, kind of see the overall progress. And I think what we wanted to highlight tonight in talking with Clay is simply that this was taken on Sunday morning. Uh, we visited the site today, which is four days later, and you can see significant progress in just four days. So as we fly in, or go up, you can again see that there's definitely height increase over in the elementary section, and also, uh, over in the gym, and work has definitely been done in the auditorium. So if we kind of look at the backside, Clay already used this particular picture, but it's just a, a different angle. Uh, this is off the smoke road. Uh, but as you go up a little bit, height, you can see the definite layout. I would like you to take a look at the top, you can see the connection road, uh, you can see how it's starting to form, and it goes to the, obviously, back to where he was talking about them working on the culvert. If you go to the right, it connects to where he mentioned the stones were out by State Route Forty. Uh, here's the bus loop, right down through the middle. Again, the, uh, road down towards the bottom that we, we walked down through, uh, this evening, that gets covered up, but remains as a safety entrance, but there won't be that connection in the future. And as we move a little bit higher, again, you can kind of see the shape of the connecting road and where it's going.
And the size of the detention bases.
Oh, that's true, too.
Is really big.
And it has water in there, as dry as it's been, too. And as we peek a little bit towards the high school, again, you were out there tonight, you can see the progress that was made in simply four days. Little bit of height, just to kind of see, uh, I think Mark was the one that pointed out, you can see the cul-de-sac there in the front of the building, so you got a perspective of maybe where the front of the building's going to be. And again, you can see the auditorium and the gymnasium going up. And the parking lots are pretty much laid out, uh, and the academic space. If you can see, it's definitely a very big, big building. Uh, further up, uh, just a different angle, just to kind of give you a perspective. Here we are, zooming into the, uh, the gymnasium. Again, you saw the walls significantly higher, so these are really outdated pictures, we'll just kind of go through them real quick. They're very impressive on Sunday, but obviously, uh, need to get back out there as the walls go up, it gets more exciting. Uh, overhead shot of the auditorium, at the bottom, you can see the orchestra pit. Uh, that's, that's kind of been, uh, the, the talk of the town on the high school site. And as we go in. Oh, I went too fast. As we come in, you can see, uh, they've got those, uh, oh, I forget the term right now. What do you got up around the rebar? Uh, the molds. So you, you, you know, obviously, this is before the molds went up, or the, whatever you.
The walls.
The walls. Yeah, the forms. So, uh, again, they've done a lot of work with the forms, and they're going to make that pour fairly soon. But you can always say to your grandchildren, you saw this thing before it went, it went up, so kind of neat. This is the view that I think Rick mentioned, that was kind of a neat view to Kirk, but it does show you the relative perspective of where the high school and the elementaries are going to be. And as you fly over to the elementary, uh, you can kind of see its general layout, you can see the connector road, parking lot out in front, bus loop, how, how it ties to the high school. And as you fly in again, uh, you're just getting closer. This, these, these get to be neat shots. Both Clay and I, uh, found it very fascinating that, you know, going from the, the paper to actually seeing it like this, uh, it really matches up. And it's a good thing it matches up, because that's what we wanted to do. Uh, so, uh, it is, uh, kind of exciting to see things actually move up. And again, just in the matter of the week, that upper right-hand classroom area, the bottom right-hand, uh, actually where the band rooms and some of the mod spaces are in that four or five building have now been, um, you know, have some floors to. Clay, anything, as we?
No, it's just amazing with some of these photos, as I was downloading on Monday, I had both my project managers, as we would download the picture, because you can actually zoom in, and we saw, well, we answered a couple of questions through these pictures on what size block they used on what wall, because you can zoom so far down to actually be able to compare walls. I was calling my superintendent about rebar caps, uh, you know, they hate me now, but I love it.
Yeah, the, the drone does have a nice camera on it, so it, it does, uh, do some good pictures. Here's the, uh, a different angle, just, uh, for perspective. Clay already highlighted the bottom side in terms of the retention water area.